Good evening, everybody. Are we going to need the microphone tonight? Yes, no, maybe?
Yes.
Yes, use the microphone? All right. Cook, you're going to have to use the microphone. I'd like to take a minute in and thank everybody for coming tonight, do some introductions, and kind of walk through what we're up to tonight. My name is Chris Hinnoy. I wear many hats this community: citizen, mayor, also Republican Central Committee Chairman. Tonight's a town hall meeting to discuss CI 126 and 127, election reform within the state of Montana. Two different initiatives. In or mingle together, more or less. We have Rob Cook here, I have Ted Cronenbush here, I have Representative Fitzgerald here as well, to talk about the different aspects of this. From a standpoint where I come from...
You forgot somebody.
Oh, Mary. Sorry, Mary Sexton. Never out of sight, never out of mind. This is a change that would take us from our current closed primary, where when you go to vote in June, you're handed a Republican ballot, a Democratic ballot, and an independent ballot, a Libertarian ballot, or whatever party ballot there is. You choose one, put that in your envelope, the other two get put into a spoils envelope, and that's the one you vote for. This would be an open primary setup, where the top four from that primary, regardless of party, would pass on to the November election. There are other states out there that have gone through this. Alaska's probably the most notable one that recently did it. Statistics say in Montana, and I want to make sure I do this right, eight percent get eighty-six, or six get eighty-eight?
Six to eighty-eight.
Six percent of the voters in the state of Montana get eighty-eight percent of the legislative seats selected.
You are stupid, oh my god.
Sorry. So, that's a huge, huge number there. Six percent get eighty-eight percent of the seats selected in the state of Montana. I think it's time for a change. And this is an opportunity that came to us. It needs forty thousand signatures to get onto the ballot. Is that correct?
Sixty.
Sixty? Okay. Sixty thousand. And they're actively seeking them. This was also something that was held up by the Attorney General to make sure that it was done properly, or they didn't think that it was... The verbiage for the Constitution understood was proper, but it did pass, so it's going to go out there. As long as I can remember, we've always had options. We've always been able to, you know, pick four, pick whatever. This gives the people, the voters, a chance to broaden their horizons, look at four candidates, it gives the people longer to get to know those four candidates, where those four candidates would stand. And it gives, I believe, a chance for the rest of Montana, the ninety-two percent, to get involved in a more equitable fashion. So, I'll give this to Rob to run through stuff, and I'm going to punch buttons for him here at the computer. So, before we start, I was going to let Ted and Mary have to give you their origin story with Montana's for election reform. You want to go first, Mary?
Sure. I know I should have been standing up, Chris. I'm sorry. I'm Mary Sexton, I'm from Shoto. And I'm a third-generation Montanan, and I now have a fifth-generation Montanan grandson. And, you know, things have changed. I see that a lot. Montana was one that I think we, for number one, we split tickets a lot. I ran for county commissioner twenty years ago and was elected as a Democrat. And I think folks didn't really care, one way or another, because they vote for a person in Montana. You don't necessarily vote for a party. And I think that's the way Montana has been. But I think more and more, it's becoming not that way. I have also worked for the governor of Montana. So, I've been around for a while, and I've seen a lot of different elections. And I am a supporter, I'm on the board of the Montanans for Elections Reform, because I really believe we need more choice. And choice means that in the primary, we can all get one ballot, and we can vote for whomever we want on that ballot. It could be two people, it could be six people, it could be eight people, and the top four from that would move forward. In my own case, I have often voted, I vote Democrat because I mean that way, I've also voted for Republicans, a number of times. In fact, recently, I wanted to vote for Ross Fitzgerald, and I had to take a Republican ballot in the primary. And that meant I couldn't even vote for my Democrats if I might have wanted to vote for another races. So, I did not have choice. And I think this is really about choice and freedom, to select those people who are going to best represent us, rather than having, whether it's on the left or the right, those extremes that often the party puts forward, be elected in the primary, because not many people vote in the primary, just those gun-ho... And independents feel lost. What do they do? They can't take both ballots, and they maybe want to go on both for two different candidates. So, I think this really does give an amount of choice. And I think in the long run, this will help balance Montana much better. And I really do believe that this is the kind of thing... And the second one, which is the majority wins, and I think Rob's going to be talking more about that, rather than just the plurality, there would be a majority in these races, would have to win in the general election. And the legislature would decide how to do this. There aren't a lot of options. Either they have another election, or there is on the ballot a choice, an instant choice, a first, second, third, and you have to determine that in the ballot. And this has been used in other states, and it works fairly well. But I think that both of these working together are a Montana solution. This isn't something we pulled out of a hat. This is something that we believe is going to work for Montana. And that's why I'm working with Republican friends, independent friends, and others that I think have really Montana's interest at heart. And I think some of the political activities that are going on right now don't really have Montana's interest best in heart. So, that's, I guess, it. I know if it's my origin or not, but my friend Ted Cronenbush, who is the Chair of the Republican Central Committee in Ponderay County.
So, I was in for a speech contest, and you were talking...
Speak loudly.
So, I won't use it. But imagine an electoral, excuse me, an electing option where you get to vote for the person, not the party. What this system does is it allows you to do that. One of the board members, who is a retired legislator, said that if you were elected, and you work on anything that is controversial or critical, you will be primaried. So, that's when you get those flyers in the mail that said, "Candidate da-da-da teaches pornography to Kenny Garters." You don't have to back it up, because it's far enough away from the election. You read that sign every day. That kind of stuff happens. These two initiatives will stop that. Crossover voting, like Mary talked about, I've done, you probably have also. That goes away. Because who's going to give up their one vote that they have in the primary? To vote for a weak candidate over there, when the candidate they want might not be able to give up. That goes away. The reason that I'm involved in this is because I sat on the executive committee for the Montana Republican Party. And I was part of a number of decisions and votes that told you people who you were going to vote for. That eight to sixteen percent that Rob will talk about, it's mind-bending that those few people, and this happens all over the United States, are telling you who you're going to vote for. So, imagine an electoral system that you get to vote for the person. So, that's why I'm supporting this. And I would appreciate if you guys would enjoy Rob's conversations and sign officially to get that. Thank you.
Enjoying my conversation might be a stretch. So, I'm Rob Cook. I'm originally a Shoto native. In fact, I've got my ten-year high school reunion coming up this summer.
You've got ten, I've got forty.
There you go. Come on now. Forty for me now, nineteen eighty-four. So, it's good to be back in Shoto. My mother was here up until 2004, so I still have pretty good ties to this community. I represented Conrad and Shelby and Cutbank for eight years in the Montana Legislature as a Republican. So, the group that's here tonight is all part of what's called Montanans for Election Reform. If you would, Chris? So, just a little background on who we are. We are truly a multi-party coalition of Montanans. We have, you know, I don't know how closely you follow the legislature, but if you look at this list, Tucker, Grubbs, Garner, and Jacobson, those are four of the people responsible for most of the major programs in this state that have actually passed with bipartisan support. Of course, we have Mary. Mary, at one time, was the Chair of the Democrat Party, which is quite an accomplishment. And then we have a fellow named Doug Campbell, who's a Libertarian that has run statewide for numerous offices, as Libertarians are wont to do.
Don't forget Tom Jacobson.
I got Tom.
Oh, did you get Tom? Okay. Missed it.
This is a deliberate plot to leave Democrats out.
Just checking on you.
I got Tom. So, what are the goals, right? When we look at, first of all, let's just take a little survey here. Who's happy with the way that the US Congress has been run for the last year? I want to see one hand. I have to see a hand in the whole state of Montana. So, that's no surprise, right? So, how do we get there, right? What causes this? What makes it so easy to do nothing? Well, what makes it easy to do nothing is the way we push people through primaries. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. But our goals are to improve representation, increase competition, and reduce divisiveness. And if there's anything that this country needs right now, it's for all of us to turn down the burner and reduce some of the divisiveness that just lets us just run off with our sand... You know, leave the sandbox, take your toys, and not have to play at all. We want to protect your right to choose who you want to vote for in every race, in every election, and especially in the primaries. And we want, by doing this, you're in charge, right? I ran four times in a district that's seventy percent Republican. Once I went to primary, there was no way I was going to get beat in the... Well, that's probably the way, but it would have been illegal. Or to lose in that general election. And what we're proposing doesn't change the makeup of districts, but it does change the way you vote for people and your potential to make different choices in the general election. Next. So, our current system, I call our current system, it isn't technically closed. Closed means you have to have a party affiliation, and that's the only ballot you get in a primary. But we're semi-closed. So, you don't have to have a party affiliation, but you do have to choose one party ballot. And what that does is that automatically limits your choices for your fellow Montanans, who you may want to vote for, but they just have to be part of a different, or a member of a different party. And on top of all that, in Montana, forty percent of voters identify as independent. So, what does an independent do when they go pick up the ballot in primary? Right? They're not even picking from their preferred list. At best, they might be picking from their preferred half list, right? So, then you have to triage the importance of the elections. And it's fundamentally unfair. And who pays for primary elections? We do. So, we pay for an election that we allow parties to funnel us into one trough or another, right out of the gate. The current system limits competition, limits participation. And currently, Montana is a very good state with our voter participation rates in primaries, but we don't get above fifty percent. In fact, we run about thirty-five percent on average. And that's good. Nation-wide, that's good. And that should scare the hell out of all of us, right? Primaries are, the semi-closed primary system is particularly vulnerable to money. And that's because of numbers. So, if thirty-five percent of people vote, and just for the sake of argument, we'll say they go half and half, Republican, Democrat. Now, let's make it forty. Twenty percent are voting on the Republican side, right? Of the entire electorate. So, that means you need ten percent plus one vote to get out of that primary. Of the entire electorate in the district, ten percent wins. So, where do I spend money? I'm going to spend money on that ten percent. And given the way social media can target each and every one of you, I know what you think. I know what issues are important to you. So, I spend big in a closed or semi-closed primary, and I am going to get my cap to the general in a district that the other side can't win. Easy, right? But wrong. And when you wonder why your representative or your senator doesn't care about what you think, it's because they don't have to. They have to care about that ten percent plus one. And who are those people? What kind of people always vote? Highly engaged, typically polarized, voting for an agenda, right? That's who comes out to vote. So, it's no surprise where we're at. Now, this number's been bandied around quite a bit tonight, but in the US Congress, eight percent of US voters are responsible for eighty-three percent of the US House. Eight and eighty-three. Is that acceptable to anybody? It shouldn't be. In Montana, we're worse. Six percent is responsible for eighty-eight percent. Six percent. And I had a question this morning about how that's figured. And a typical district, let's take mine, where it was seventy-thirty Republican to Democrat, a Democrat is not going to win the general barring some criminal offense on my part, right? And even now, that might not matter. It used to, and it still should. So, I'm not condoning that. But in my primary, maybe two thousand people vote.
In a ten thousand...
In a ten thousand voter district. So, and I say got fifteen hundred of those. So, fifteen hundred, fifteen percent of that ten thousand chose me to be their representative. See how that works? So, something has to change with primaries.
So, Rob, I want to ask you...
Go ahead.
The states that have gone to this, what kind of increase in participation have they seen in the primaries? Like you say, we're thirty-five percent.
Yeah, it's...
Have they seen, what kind of percentage or proportion increases?
It's a good question. But it asks two answers, and not to try to avoid it. But the first one is it's relatively new, and so people are conditioned not to vote in primaries, especially the independents, who have to go pick up a one ballot or another. So, they just skip primaries. And so, it takes a while for that to build. And that does happen, but it doesn't overnight go from thirty-five percent to seven. But the flip side of that, I've got to think, I've got to get back to my train of thought there. The... What this essentially does is move most of the primary to the general. So, even though you don't see immediately an increase in votes in the primary, you have moved four candidates to the general. So, you've moved the primary into that bigger voting block. So, that's your first real gain. Does that make sense? Okay. So, our solution here is, sorry about that, is CI 126, which is a top-four open primary. And all that means is every candidate for a particular office will be on the same ballot. There's some confusion out there that it's going to be unaffiliated, and you won't know what party they belong to. That's not true. You get to label your party. The only difference is that you're all on the same ballot. So, there's no choice. To go to, when you go to vote, you don't have to pick one or the other. There's just one ballot. Of that, you vote for one candidate for office, and the top four vote-getters for that office then move on. That becomes your general election category. Because Montana has a plurality defined in the Constitution as a sufficient condition to win an election, the difference between a plurality and a majority is a plurality is the person who gets the most votes. A majority, you have to get fifty percent plus one more vote. We brought a majority winner initiative after the open primary initiative to ensure that with four candidates moving on, you don't end up with somebody with theoretically twenty-six percent of the vote winning in the general election. I think I've been over most of this. Are there any questions on 126? You may have noticed I don't pay much attention to the slides.
So, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So, it's a single vote per voter, it's not a ranked vote?
In the primary, it's not ranked. One vote, one vote for each office, just like today.
Different than some of the other ranked vote initiatives?
Well, we can talk about that on 127. So, but in the primary, one vote per office, top four move on. CI 127? Yep, go ahead.
So, with 126, the candidate is not required to be nominated by their political party, correct?
Correct. You actually aren't today.
Okay. So, if someone who was not nominated by their political party get on the ballot, how would they do that?
No, okay, that's a good question. I understand, I think where you're coming from. So, in today's current ballot access formula, parties qualify to automatically qualify. And what that means is that Republicans, Democrats, and Libertarians mostly have already pre-qualified to get direct access to the ballot. And you do that by getting five percent of the vote in a statewide race. So, parties that haven't qualified have to collect signatures to access the ballot.
Talk about independents.
Yeah, and independents, a good one. You can, and last time, in that eastern congressional district, had to collect signatures to get on the general election ballot. So, if your party hasn't qualified, then you collect signatures, you get on that ballot. Does that answer your question? Now, if you're unaffiliated, or not unaffiliated, but not nominated...
Right.
You can still say you're a Democrat or a Republican. Happens all the time. The party doesn't declare that Rob Cook is a Republican. I do. So, does that answer that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, it's not, it doesn't decrease access.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
And in fact, because the legislature last session tried to make it harder for third parties to qualify, we fixed the current numbers in the Constitution. So, that's also part of this initiative.
So, there's a required number of signatures you need as an independent, let's using that as an example, to get on. A Republican candidate that's already pre-qualified needs five signatures. And an independent needs considerably more.
Yeah, a qualified candidate, a qualified party doesn't need any signatures. But, so for example, an independent which isn't a pre-qualified party, it requires five percent of the votes. The signature has to equal five percent of the votes, the total votes cast for that office. So, governor was six hundred thousand votes or so last time. You'd have to have thirty thousand signatures to run for governor as an independent. But that, none of that has changed.
Not set by the legislature, isn't it?
Yeah, it is currently set by the legislature, but we're freezing those numbers in the Constitution so that we can't make it harder on a whim for third parties to access the ballot there. So, now, 127, we're back to you and your ranked choice question, right? Okay. So, 127 requires a majority to win. We've got four candidates move through, and the top two get some numbers in the forties, and the bottom two get next to nothing, right? But nobody gets fifty plus one. The legislature has to decide the method that will be used to ensure a majority. There's really only two answers. One is a runoff, like Georgia does. Most famously, right, it's probably Georgia's runoff. We all saw that with Warnock and...
Kirsten Walker.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who the other Democrat was. Warnock and... Anyway. They both were in runoffs, and so that creates an additional election after the general election. There's another method called instant runoff, where you rank your choices in the general election. And then, what happens in that system is the guy that gets the least votes is second-place choice. The second-place choice on those ballots gets redistributed upwards. And so, you never have to vote again. It just goes through, and you, basically, it's an average of how you feel about candidates, right? And so, that's what they're calling ranked choice vote. Does that answer your question?
Um, no.
Okay. Thank you. Sitting down, I'm trying to figure it out too.
So, I thought when I was reading some literature on ranked choice in other states, it was you could vote for four...
You can.
Four candidates.
You can. And you put them in order. You put them in order. The guy or gal that got the least first-place votes...
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I thought the initiative said the voter gets one vote.
Two different elections. The initiative applies to the primary.
Okay.
The majority winner applies to the general.
There's still ranking there.
You could. That's up to the legislature. You could rank, or you could runoff.
So, Rob, the question that I get from people when we talk about this is, if we have another election, another runoff, the cost. It's more dollars that come back to the local people that have to pay for an election. And if the election is in November, what is it, the first Tuesday or second Tuesday of November, and the legislature, that session's going to start in January, you've got little time to turn something around, which could also increase the cost of another election.
I agree with that totally. But again, that decision isn't up to me or to you in these initiatives. It's up to the legislature. So, there's a pretty decent cost-benefit analysis against a runoff election. But again, that's not our choice.
I have a question.
Yeah, okay.
So, I want you to explain to me...
Truthfully?
On the general election, if we went to that ranked choice, just describe how you take votes from the bottom and put them up to the next one.
Okay. So, in that system, instant runoff, I would vote for one, two, three, four, right? And say the guy or gal that I voted for finished last.
Your number one finished last.
Yeah, my number one finished last. Kind of like when I go to the track. The vote, then, my second choice gets redistributed up. And so, and then, number three drops out, right? Because, and then, so then it becomes a top two, but you never have to vote again. So, that's how the distribution works.
But doesn't that mean that your vote could go to a candidate for whom you didn't vote?
No. No, no. It's because my number one got me excluded, right? Because they finished last. My number two goes to that candidate.
So, you voted for that person, but you didn't vote for him?
Yeah, I voted for him second.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Alaska does that. Famously, they just switched. They have a open primary, top-four system, with ranked choice voting. They did it all in one initiative. You may wonder why we have two. We have two because the Montana Constitution requires that we... It requires that you can't have an initiative that addresses two sections of the Constitution at the same time. So, we had to split. It'd be a lot simpler system if it was all in one amendment. And frankly, it'd be a lot less expensive to try to do this. But that's why we have two. Any other questions? These are good questions. Yes?
So, I was reading in the initiative that was talking about ties were... So I was reading in the initiative that was talking about ties were decided or determined as allowed by law.
Yeah.
So is there law or rules or Constitution that says...
There is, yeah. There already are laws for determining what happens in a tie. If you and I tie today in a general election with exactly the same amount of votes, it goes to, I believe, or say, it depends on the seat. But depending on what seat it is, is how the tie gets dissolved. But there's a full, there's a full litany of rules for each office and how a tie is broken. In a primary, actually, in a primary, you can go to a coin flip.
But those ties are decided by somebody in the government. The governor can't?
No, the governor doesn't, the governor doesn't pick the winner. No.
That's not necessarily true.
Go ahead.
So if there is a tie for Supreme Court Justice, Supreme Court Judge, or state legislature, then the Secretary of State shall send a certified statement to the governor, and the governor shall appoint one of these candidates to the office.
One of which candidates?
One of the ones in town. Supreme Court Justice, District Court Judge, or state legislature, if there is a tie. The governor picks the winner.
Or Supreme Court Justice.
Yes.
Okay. So that's in law today.
But that isn't one of the covered...
Offices, no, no. No, but there are other offices that are selected kind of in the same area. The truth to that, though, is it has to be a tie in the general election, right, a straight-up tie. And that's currently, that would happen today, irrespective of either one of these two. Although, no, with majority winner, there can't be a tie. No, let me rephrase that. You could have the really bad luck of having a top-two runoff election where you ended up in a tie. That is statistically very improbable, right?
It would be statistically very improbable by the time someone had a recount and took the time to do it, and you'd have two days for a legislator or somebody to get seated into that seat before they actually have to go and work. Because as soon as the election's over, Ross, Senator Bruce, back there, you guys go to trainings as quick as possible, they get you down there to keep going. So you have a very narrow scope of time to get on your election, into your trainings, into your seats, and get ready to go for your sessions, correct?
Yeah. A runoff election would create problems. The way it currently works in Montana is you have the general election, about a week and a half later, you meet, the two caucuses meet in Helena to select leadership. They populate the committees coming out of that once leadership is chosen. Then in December, it starts with training for legislators to get up to speed for an upcoming session. If you were to throw a runoff election in there, you're going to, at minimum, compress that time schedule in a couple of weeks, right?
She is absolutely right. I looked up the MCA.
Yeah, she was reading the MCA.
6503, and it does exist right now, and a lot of the other ones it does as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'd forgotten that. In the case of a tie in the general election, then it can go to appointment. So now, this isn't an appointment process, if you're thinking that's what's going on here.
The county elections commissioner's report. It's for other offices besides United States Congress, Mary.
Yeah, I think...
Appoint MCA Part 5. Appoint if there's a tie.
And it's appointed only by the governor.
Governor.
But that's not true for local elections.
No, no. Is it even for the legislature?
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
For state executive officers, it's the legislature. County commissioner, the senior district judge shall appoint a candidate. Other county officers, it's the commissioners that appoint it.
It's all in MCA Part 5.
Yep.
It's rigged.
Good, you know it's that.
It is.
I can do that.
It is.
Yeah. A tie?
Yeah.
Yeah, conceivably, you could have a tie.
Conceivably, you could.
Yeah.
And you're more likely to have a tie with local and state elections than for general elections.
Wait a minute now, we're way out in the weeds here, let's bring this back.
What's my MCA I'm looking for?
Part 5.
But let's stop with the ties for a second, because a tie is statistically so improbable to begin with, and neither one of these initiatives has anything to do with a tie. The law is the law. It's in place today. Now, if we're not happy with the appointment process under current law, then let's go to Helena and change that. Let's not drag that unhappiness into these two initiatives, because they are not related.
So say we pass CI 126 and not 127.
We're still in much better shape than we are today, because we're moving four candidates to the general election, we have more choice, we're going to have more voter accountability for how those candidates behave, and we're going to have sooner or later an election that makes everybody angry that somebody won with 31% of the vote.
That would be a plurality winner then.
Yeah. That's all that happens. We get all of the benefits of choice and accountability, and we live with the one wild card where somebody wins with a very, very low plurality, like I said.
But 50% is not, in 126, if just 126 means, the four people, there's no 127, so they don't have to win by 50% in the general.
Right, because currently, we could currently have exactly that election. If we had a strong independent and a strong libertarian against a Republican and a Democrat for US House, we could have that US House seat in the low 30s. That's our current Constitution. You got a question?
You looking at me?
Yep.
Oh, I have a lot of... I'll bring him up.
Anything else? So where were we?
There's a talk about, there was a conversation about a tie and the cost. There's a congressional race going on right now, you see it every day, you're on the internet or the news. Those two parties are going to spend $700 million for an office that pays $150,000 a year.
$196.
$196.
I didn't look.
So what, I cannot spend much time quantifying the cost of a runoff election when they're spending some country's budget.
A city election for me runs about $3,800 bucks. And they're going to spend $700 to $1 billion on one seat.
Yeah, well, it'll be at least $300 million on one seat, which is crazy money, right?
But how is this going to change that?
It doesn't. What it does is it moves the spending to October again. It moves a big, in a sense, it shortens your TV window. That's probably the way to look at it. Rather than campaigning in May, April and May, and then again in September, Montana, the wall being condensed into that September, November run. The amount of money that's in elections is the byproduct of Citizens United, which was a Supreme Court case that Montana lost. And it allows corporations to spend in elections. And when that occurred, the amount of money that became available for electioneering was exponentially increased. That's what's made the primaries more vulnerable now. I've got to get the question, well, in 1972, this worked. What did? Worked just fine, because the money wasn't there to choke out candidates in a primary So the main effects, I like this first one the most, because I'm a Republican, and, well, I self-identify as Republican. It turns out there are Republicans who don't think that's true. But everywhere I go, if I'm talking to a room that's predominantly Democrat, they think that somehow, some way, this is a Republican plot to control more seats, and vice versa. If you've noticed, the chairman of our party, Don Kelchmidt, just had an op-ed that said, oh, this is a Democrat plot to steal seats from Republicans. In trying to, to change that dynamic, we would have to change the makeup of the constituency. And there's nothing in these two initiatives that change how you're going to vote, right? If you're a Republican today, you're a Republican tomorrow, you might have more choices to vote for, but it doesn't change that underlying demographic. My district will still be 73, right? It doesn't help you, it helps you to vote. And I'm not surprised that the parties are against it, right? Because it takes away a lot of their power, their ability to be kingmakers.
So I guess I would comment on that if I may. So when I look at the information, the literature on this ranked choice...
Right now, we do need to take a step back. You keep going to ranked choice, ranked choice is not in either one of these initiatives. It's a potential outcome of the second ones.
The general.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'm not sure how this fits in with the ranked choice, but the states that are implementing ranked choice are the blue states. You go down the coast.
Well, I'd say Alaska's about as red as you can get.
Yeah, and they've got an initiative to repeal it too.
They do, they do.
And then there's Maine, there's the East Coast, there's Illinois, there's Michigan. So all the blue states have initiatives, but the red states, North Dakota, they prohibit it.
Montana did. Montana has a lot of...
So I guess when you say it doesn't favor one party or the other, I'm not understanding why. The blue states are very much for it, and the red states are not as excited about it.
Well, let's back up first of all, because what you're seeing is where it's been enacted to date, right?
Correct.
Right? And so the last red state to enact it was Alaska. We currently have initiatives that are going to ballot in Idaho, Montana, Nevada, and Arizona.
Well, Nevada's, Arizona, I mean, they're populated by West Coast, so they're going to be...
I can't have a real argument with you, you just get to make a claim that's really unsupportable. There's, a state like Nevada is as purple as a state gets. Arizona is as well. Their statewide and their federal elections were less than 20,000 votes. So...
Well, I'd put money on it.
Well, I'm not here to bet with you. Idaho will put it on the ballot. Otter, I think, has supported it.
Sure, Boise is a lot of West Coasters.
All right, well... I'm not going to buy that. I think it's a lazy argument to say that constituency is this or that.
Your argument is it doesn't favor one party or the other, but I can show you that the blue states are very supportive of this initiative, and the red states...
You can show me that the blue states have implemented it, and the red states are, west of the Mississippi, are catching up now by initiative. Nevada passed it already. Their constitution says you have to pass an initiative twice. You want to talk about a high bar, right? A lot of Western states, you have to get 60% of the vote to pass a citizens' initiative. So there's all kinds of hurdles to the citizens' process. But the actual, why would the existing power dynamics want to change the way they get elected? Out of the kindness of their heart? Hell, no.
Money?
No, not money.
Oh, yeah.
Not money, they want the state in power.
Sure.
So they don't want to change.
No.
That's where I'm coming from.
No, that's not true.
Okay. I don't know what else to do here. Next?
So the other question I have, if you say that, and the literature indicates that, and maybe your argument is valid, but the literature indicates that it doesn't really increase the primary turnout, and maybe it's because it's novel, people have it...
But it does have the secondary effect of, in essence, moving more candidates to the general, where there is more turnout. So if you wanted to look at it as a crass solution, it's just moving the primary to the general, and that works in your head, then the argument becomes moot that fewer people turn out, because you're putting the primary in the maximum voting, 78%.
I guess my point of thinking about it in the primary is that you're asking to move that needle, because you're going to have to educate people, you're going to have to get people interested in the process, and get them educated.
That's true.
And that's why they're not voting in the primary, because they don't have, they have family and work to do, they're not going to spend...
Some of that is true. I can't argue with why people don't vote in the primary, right? And we know they don't.
Some of them are distant franchisees.
Yeah, well, I think a good chunk of them are distant franchisees, because they're sitting in the middle, and they have to pick a ballot. So, go ahead, Mary.
I'm going to reiterate, and I think my friend Ted would agree with me, because we're of a generation, that Montana has not been as polarized or as extreme in our lifetime. Didn't you say that, Ted?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And a Republican and a Democrat. And I think that right now for Montana, why this is important, is that it brings us back more to the center, which is a dirty word for some folks. On both sides of the aisle. And I think this is a Montana solution, it's not an East Coast or a West Coast. In fact, I would posit a lot of the turn to the red has been folks that maybe come into the state from L.A. I don't know if that's true or not, but Montana has been a reliably purple state. Because we've split our ballots, this gives us our opportunity in the primary to, again, look at the person, because we know these people. We know them in the community, we know them in the state, we're small enough, we know them. And so this is a Montana solution, this is not an Oregon or a Georgia solution, this is a Montana solution. And I kind of, I think when I say East Coast, West Coast, baloney, this is Montana.
Right, and so...
Think you were great, Ted?
Well, I was part of that 8% that told you exactly who you were voting for. And I did it for 15 years, and it finally dawned on me that this is probably not the best way to run a state.
I was too, as a Republican Central Committee voter, at the state ballot. Our votes, the way that they changed the state Republican Central Committee vote now, we don't go. There's no sense for us to spend dollars to go to the state central committee and weigh in on things, because the way they've changed those, it used to be five votes per county. Now it's been changed, so that the five people in your county, your vote is measured by the number of votes for the governor's race in that county. Yellowstone County wipes out well over a third of the rest of the state.
It's become like an irrigation district, where you have waiting chairs and the votes. That's probably the easiest way to describe it here.
You know, and I can go back to when I ran for House District 17 as a youngster against Sam Rose. Most folks know my grandmother, she was as Democratic as they come, she was as Catholic as they come, but if the Pope was a Republican, she probably wouldn't have voted for him. I ran as a Republican, and she went to her, she died without ever telling me if she had the gauche vote for me as a Republican or not. She just couldn't find herself to do that, to take that ballot out.
Yeah, but I don't think it's the same. The Democratic Party is not the Democratic Party that you know.
In defense of my Democrat friends, could you say the Republican Party is what it used to be?
I don't know that it is either.
Yeah, yeah, no. The parties have, I think we can all agree, moved to the polls. You see this in the makeup of the United States Congress, you see it in the makeup of the Montana Senate and the Montana House of Representatives. It's, there are countless charts from both sides. On the right, from the Heritage Foundation, on the left, from, I don't even remember the groups, that show the actual movement of what would be an average Republican over time, right? An average Republican in the US... And the average Republican in the US House went from, say, two percent off-center, safely in the bell curve of average, all the way to wings. And likewise with Democrats. And this polarization means you can't govern, it's too easy. Eight guys shut down the US Congress. Eight guys shit canned Speaker of the House. The third most powerful guy in Washington. Eight guys. How do you govern in that environment? You don't, the answer is, the answer is you don't. They can't name a damn post office right now. We should be pissed.
We are, we are.
They passed the trillion, three, three point one trillion dollar budget.
They did do that.
Yeah.
Not, not a budget, a continuing resolution. Let's be careful with that, we haven't had a budget in forty years, so... So...
We'll be paying for that for a long time.
We will be, actually, you and I, we might be dead if we want to. If I keep this up, I might be dead before you. Go ahead, Butch.
Well, I have to counter all this just a little bit, anyway. I think we're better than that in Montana. Uh, you know, yeah, we're definitely party line vote on certain things, there's no doubt about it, and we don't change much, but there's an awful lot of things we agree on. And we vote fifty to nothing, or forty to ten, and sometimes under forty-five, yes, there's a couple, three Republicans on, on part of that, and there's a couple, three Democrats on part of that. But, uh, but I have to give ourselves a little bit of credit, like, I don't think we're near as bad as we are back in DC, and I think we do get along awfully well.
I'll give you that much credit, and I agree with you. But, but if I compare where you were the last session, where we were with, where we were in fifteen or seventeen, it's not close.
That's so true. It's changed radically in a short period of time.
It has, it has, and, go ahead.
So, I'm, uh, from Generation X, probably one generation on the most people in the room, and this is very exciting to me.
I'm the first, first guy of X.
There you go.
Yeah.
Um, because it makes the primaries relevant, I'm an independent, I loathe the primaries because I feel the party's big. And I would love a chance to pick the best person for the job from wherever they...
You want the microphone? Thank you very much.
I also think it will encourage younger people to get into politics.
Yeah.
I think they feel like they don't have a chance because they're not party-supported and they come from different vantage, so I see this also as creating entry points for the next generation politicians.
And I agree with you on that as well. So, you summed up everything I would've said in the closing, right?
And she's in the Shoto City Council.
It was well done, it was well done. Uh, one of the problems we have now is recruiting candidates, because primary elections are brutal. They're not fun, you get called all kinds of names by groups that may or may not actually exist. And so good people stay away.
So, to me, this would be encouraging, I don't think it would take much, a couple rounds of it and people would get it, and they're like, okay, let's go.
I think you're right, and now I wanna touch back on this Alaska recall effort on ranked choice. Alaska was able to put it all in one event, on one initiative, uh, and they tweaked it up a little bit with some other stuff as well, 'cause we can. But the, the, the polling on their ranked choice system after their legislative session was near seventy percent approval. And in today's current politics, Santa Claus doesn't poll seventy percent. So I think the recall effort is a lost cause, I will bet you on that, and Alaskans like it. And with that, let's go to the last slide because I think it's Alaska.
That's the last slide I got first.
All right, well, let me tell you about Alaska, I'll just make some stuff up. Alaska's, the, the overall constituency, demographic of the Alaska House and Senate didn't change much. Right? A couple more independents actually got elected than normal, but the Democratic and Republican numbers were, were largely unchanged. Alaska under ranked choice elected a very conservative government. And the screaming and howling you hear in Republican circles is they elected a very conservative Democrat to the US House.
Who, who voted to impeach the President.
Okay.
That's not too, that's not too damn conservative.
All right, all right, so, Mitt Romney. Romney doesn't count as a conservative?
No.
All right, all right, just, just getting, just, just testing the water there.
No, he's defective.
I like you. The, uh... No, it's not, but...
True.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue about drift and corruption and all that horseshit that people use and set to start the current status quo. Let's change this shit and get the people we want.
I can give you an idea, as the Republican Central Committee Chairman here since two thousand and eleven, we used to have a shrimp field, and I could get thirty-five, forty people to help me. I had a Lincoln Reagan dinner coming up Saturday night, and I have two people, me and my term group. Because nobody else wants to be involved. They will write checks, but they will not come out in public and do it because they do not want to be associated with the hardcore MMA politics that's become America. And I don't know what to do. I mean, I've got, I'm a fourth generation here in Shoto, my daughter and son-in-law are five and my grandkids are six. And I wanna see, not in Shoto, but our state remain a viable and functioning place for those kids to be raised, you want. And if you can't go out and have a conversation in today's marketplace without worrying about losing a friend over a cup of coffee because you say something you think is sane and they think is, is lunacy, I don't see us winning. I don't see America coming out on top, I don't see Shoto, I don't see Teton County, I don't see Montana coming out on top. When you go to buy a car, you always do your research and you pick the car you want. When you go to buy a house, you do the same thing. This just gives you more options across the board to look at a longer period of time at your candidates and do your homework. And I agree with Councilwoman Mertin Duni said, it's going to engage those who currently are not engaged because they feel they're disenfranchised, that their vote doesn't matter. And Melissa, what you said to the parties, you know, Republican registers to run for office, I don't have to know about it as a Central Committee person, I would hope that that, that they would come and talk to me about it before they do it, especially if we have an incumbent in our office that's already a Republican. I would work with that person and tell him, you know, hey, let's do this and let's do that, and work to build a, a bullpen, and I don't think the bullpen in both Republican Party and the Democratic Party of the state of Montana right now is one I'd wanna take to any type of competitive softball game, let alone a political campaign. And it worries me.
But I think there's, I think there's a distinct difference between, and I don't disagree with you, but I think there's a distinct difference between what happened in Montana legislation and what happens in the national system.
I hope so, but you can see it at times, it has some policy of all directions.
Last four years, we've been together and changed...
But I don't, I don't think anything we're gonna do here is gonna impact what's going on in the nation.
And, uh, it does, it does change how we, we select those offices, so it could. Now, you could argue that Montana's two representatives would never amass the power to have any influence in the, in the US House.
With the Senate, the Senate vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't argue that, but I'd be honest with you, for a guy like me, and I'll put it out there, Owen, that has political aspirations in the future, under the current system, there is no way I get elected in this state, because I am not pure enough Republican, no matter how conservative I wanna be, if I'm socially moderate, or the fact that I was the city, as the mayor of Shoto, I'm helping to put together roughly twenty-plus million dollars of infrastructure, and then I go to run for statewide office, I'm gonna be some forty Republican who spent twenty million dollars in taxpayer dollars trying to improve his community. No true-blooded Republican is ever gonna do that.
So, so the byproduct of earning, the, the byproduct of having to earn a majority of your electorate is the accountability back to those people, right? And, and the, the benefit to the politician who gets a majority is, is the fact that it becomes easier to do the right thing. If you're doing the right thing, you're going to keep those votes. Today, we, our, our system is actually perversely disincentivizes doing the right thing. What it, what it incentivizes doing is appealing to the ten percent. Because that's safer.
And I'm with a lot of you guys, one twenty-six I like, one twenty-seven at times scares me, because I don't know how we're gonna come out of this. And from my standpoint as the, you know, executive of City of Shoto, another election for us costs money, another election for Teton County costs money, and our budgets are all right and tight.
The, the most common question...
But we don't want people to be disenfranchised either.
Right.
Okay, so I, I totally understand the cost, but we don't want people to be disenfranchised because, especially, and I'm Generation X too, now I can tell you, people in my generation, we're not as beholden to political parties as the Boomers are. You know, and neither are the generations behind me.
Yeah.
You know, so you don't wanna disenfranchise them, I get about the cost, I get, I get, I get, understand it, but you don't wanna come across as being disenfranchised. I personally cannot support one twenty-seven, um, because of the, the issue with the ties, it's not being properly dealt with, in my opinion.
Okay, but you would, you would have to change that today by changing Montana.
Right, I understand, so I will, I will contact my appropriate legislators to...
Right behind you. I think it's tied over here, Ted.
It needs to be done, it needs to be done, because it's, it's rigged, it's rigged.
Yeah, and, and the reason...
It disenfranchises people, it disenfranchises my vote if there's a tie.
It does, it does. Uh, again, it's in the very unlikely event that there is a tie.
But it happens.
Well, I, I've only seen a tie in a primary, I have never seen a tie in...
So if it doesn't happen that often, and then if you have another runoff, you're not talking about a whole lot of money, you're gonna be spending all the time, right? If it doesn't happen that often.
I'm glad you said that, 'cause that's what I thought, there's, there's some confusion here between the tie and not getting a majority. The, if you don't get, the, the runoff would happen, whether it's instant or another election, if you did get a majority in the general election.
Yes.
So you only got eight, you, you won, you got forty-eight percent of the vote, and the next closest guy got thirty-eight, say, and then the other two picked up the scraps, there's no majority winner in that forty-eight or thirty-eight.
And Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, for statewide elected offices, that's only happened four times.
What's that?
That there's been no plurality.
Yeah, yeah, it's even rarer, it's even been rarer.
Twice Democrats and twice Republicans, where there's no plurality, where you'd have to have another election to do ranked choice voting.
It is true.
It is not that common.
Well, it, it wasn't, right?
It wasn't, it could be now, it could be now.
Fundamentally, I can't, I can't say it...
It's still there in law.
Well, no, that's a tie, let's stop with that, it's a tie, we'll get back to the tie. Um, the plurality numbers are likely to increase because you now have four good candidates.
But before, you also had three or four parties, I mean, there were four...
Yeah, yeah, but, but you got an automatic Green and you got an automatic Ritter, and you could very well have two Republicans and two Democrats in a state like top-level race. And then you get a majority, you would have to be a sectional candidate. So, now back to ties, maybe we should just go offline, but the tie is, is unrelated to the majority winner. The tie occurs when you just both get the same amount of votes. So, um, for the tie rules to come into effect, you would have to have a case where two people, two people got the same amount of votes in the runoff election, we'll just assume it's a runoff, uh, rather than, than an instant runoff, which is way harder, I think, to get a tie, uh, because of the way ballots drop out and just the way it goes. But in that runoff election, they would have to both receive exactly the same amount of votes. That would have to withstand probably three recounts, where there's always a shift, one winner or the other, even though it's very small. Um, and, and then you go to the rules that currently exist in law. But I think the reason we're not upset with those rules is because we've never used them. That's probably, does that make sense? I mean, if we ever got to the point where the governor was picking the winner of a Supreme Court race because it was exactly tied, we'd be, well, we'd be, we'd, we would be aware of these laws and we wouldn't be happy with it.
But if they actually tied, they'd have to have a run...
Get your man in the corner. I'm gonna give Ross a, yes?
If they tied, they'd actually have to have the runoff again, if they were to, say, let's say, the top vote gatherers.
Well, yeah, because you...
They'd have to keep running on, they'd still have to have another...
I don't know, there wouldn't be a mechanism for a second runoff. I think you would go to the rules.
Unless the legislature put in their rules.
Yeah, 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 and if you're, if you're upset with the tie rules, separate that from these two initiatives.
Yeah, I'd say the tie rules exist with, with... But the tie rule, but the tie rule is, is in the initiative, in one twenty-seven.
No, it just says that ties will be as determined by law, which means the current law is the rule.
How are you coming on the signatures? How is it coming, the signatures?
Excellent, I don't wanna give out any numbers.
You have to have sixty thousand.
We, we have, we have our, our goals, our targets, so we're, we have, we have a great core of volunteer signature gatherers in the Flathead, in, uh, Elna, and in Harbin County, where they are going like crazy. And, uh, so they're doing very well. Phenomenal mechanism to qualify, it takes sixty thousand three hundred and fifty-nine ballot signatures to qualify just one initiative. So we have to do that twice. If, that's a big number, it's ten percent of the total vote in the last governor's election.
So, so we won.
You want to sign?
Yes.
We've got them right here, that's what, oh, if you were asking to sign, I would've stopped early. Meanwhile, the signature gathering, though, just to answer your first question, is we're ahead of pace.
And if you wanna become a signature gatherer, we have videos, trainings, let us know, and we'll email you that, and you can sign up to be a signature gatherer. Have a petition on it. No, you have to sign it, but if you wanna carry a petition, oh, we, we need to train that.
Rob, are we done?
Uh, yeah.
All right, we can wrap it up and you can take us offline. Thank you, guys.